Folks. Next item is to open up the work session. We'll come to order at 6:26. Roll call.
Mrs. Scaries?
Here.
Joseph Jones?
Here.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Here.
And Teresa Harms?
Here.
All right, we've said the pleasure of allegiance. I don't believe we have to do that again. So open this up to employee compensation discussion. Dennis? I believe this is
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the goal of this evening's discussion is to land on a draft compensation philosophy and in preparation for that, the council was sent a survey, a brief survey of only six questions that talked about different things the city would strive to become as an employer and structure their compensation program around that. And so the results of the survey were sent out to the council. You have those in front of you, hopefully. And I'd like to go through this quickly and identify those key words that spoke to me that then I transferred over into finishing up this draft compensation philosophy that you were sent as well. So when I went through the questions and the answers, it seemed to me like phrases such as employer of choice, financially viable, quality services and fiscal responsibility, long tenured, high performing employees, compensation above or near the median and competitive with the labor market. And also the need to be to maintain financial health of the community. So in doing that, I wanted to open this up for the council if you want to discuss the questions and why you answered a certain way. But then the next thing we would move on to is how that would help contribute to crafting the compensation philosophy. So with that, Mr. Mayor, just open it up to anybody that wants to talk about or explain their responses to the survey.
Who wants to go first? Mike? LaFredo?
I didn't respond, Dave. I questioned the questions.
Okay.
I put it in writing, so I'm not going to say it again.
Okay. Mike Jones?
Mr. Mayor, then I jump in, Mike. I mean, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
We assumed that the, we did receive responses from a Mr. Carey. And we assume that was Mr. LaFredo's because we assume that he went next door. So if you please, into the survey results, just eliminate any where you see LaFredo because we made that mistake. I'm sorry.
That's probably my fault.
Okay. Mike Jones?
Yeah, you're going to have to give me a second. I've got to pull up the the responses on the word document. Be a minute. Okay, so what is my homework assignment to talk about here?
Oh, man, so on the philosophy survey results as pertains to what your position was on those items.
Well, I think my philosophy can pretty much be explained in the final question, which is which one of the philosophy statements do you most agree? Which is, I think Dennis, you may have said above or near the median. The way this question answer says is at or near the median, which I think are two different things. But in short, yes, we should be doing at or near the median within financial constraints. I think everybody, I would hope everybody on this council recognizes that we want to maintain quality employees and want to hire quality employees within financial constraints. And I guess if you don't feel that way, well, doesn't seem like you really care about there being a city. And so that's not a conversation I'm interested in having with you. But yes, my philosophy is pretty much summed up in question six.
Joseph? Same?
Yeah, I just say that we're, we're competing for talent in a regional setting, right? So I think that we all, most of us recognize that although we're a small city, we're still in the heart of a metro region. So we are competing with salaries that are of the salary that someone should get paid in our metro for doing that job, no matter what the size of our city is. And I think that we are going to have to look at that and compensate to create both the financial and intrinsic benefits of working for our city. And, and I think that to Mike's point, we have to budget and have the finances to, to make that possible. But it's not something that we can short change folks on in terms of marking what a position is paid.
Thank you. Teresa?
Hello, so my, I would agree with number six kind of be summing up the the philosophy statement. So I did not respond to these, but I would tell you that they're generally consensus with where everybody else is on the responses. I would also, so I look at this a little bit differently from a business owner's perspective. Because at the end of the day, we need to have a balanced budget where there's only so many dollars from within which you get to work. If I want to, if I want to raise salaries or take home more money or add staff or any of those pieces, then I have to figure out where does that revenue come from in order to do that? And so some people may not like this approach and or may not agree with it, but but I guess that's why I get to have my own opinion. But so I look at this a little bit differently from the perspective that I, I agree that we're competing within the same space within the region, but we also have different levels of, of organizations within the region. So an analogy I might make is the city of Des Moines might be similar to a big for profit. You know, insurance company, maybe it's well marked. Okay, a big organization that has a lot of money. And then and there may be a communications director that this is not meant to specify anybody. Let's actually, let's call him a janitor. They might have a janitor there and they pay X number of dollars for a janitor. A nonprofit organization is still needs a janitor and but they have less of a budget from which they, because they're, they get their dollars via different ways. They're not a corporate organization. And so I look at this from our organization is smaller or than that, that, that corporate entity. If you look at the comparison. And so that's the beauty of it is people have opportunities to work for different types of organizations. And within those different types of organizations comes some different levels of responsibilities. And within that comes different salary ranges. So I appreciate and respect trying to be at a median for that job, but understanding that we're not going to be paying the highest. And sometimes we might not be able to meet that because of the financial constraints that we have as an organization. I just want you guys to have a little bit of understanding on where my, where I, how I think about or how I approach the salaries conversation with or compensation. That's where I'm coming from.
Can I, can I add something to that topic? I think in conjunction with salaries, which is, I think we have an outstanding staff. So that's, that's that's known. And I believe that strongly. But I think when you look at trying to fulfill a philosophy at certain and try to quantify it in terms of wage and benefits, it's hard to do, number one. But I think you also have to look at at the same time, the level of staffing. So there is a level of staffing and and so if there's so much that is going to go for salaries and benefits, perhaps there can't, there might be some reduction of staff. And I think that's part of the, the consequence of the whole, whole thing. I'm not saying there is, but I think that's all part of the equation. Level of staffing, what the city thinks they can afford to pay and, and put it all together. Because we did do a little increase in, in the past, I think, at the central, central city offices. And so I, I think those are all part of the formula to, I mean, it's just not the salary of individuals. It's the whole ball of wax and, and certainly the level of staffing is a key component of it.
Thank you, Mike. Susan?
I agree with, you know what Mike Jones said about, you know, we, we need to make sure that we keep our staff, you know, do the median wage, but I, I think also we have to look at the fact that we are a small community. We only have so much money coming in. We have to make sure that, that it's sustainable, the pay that we are giving. So for me, sometimes I would think outside the box and maybe we can't give them everything that Johnston or Des Moines or whoever else can give, but maybe there's something else that we can give our staff members such as, you know, eight hours of PTO time or you know, relaxing on the 40 hour work week or, you know, whatever out of the box thinking that we can come up with. I don't think it's just all about the money. I think if we have happy staff on top of being paid inappropriate amount of money and they understand that we appreciate their work, their service. We understand that we, as a community, don't have the amount of funds that some of our other communities do have. So we're doing the best we can, but we do appreciate your work. I wish that there was some comments or like there was a little comment box that you could kind of write in some of the answers. I thought some, some of the questions were kind of leading. And I picked the better of the, the two evils for some of, for at least one of the questions. So other than that, I, I guess, you know, we have to make sure that there's a balance between paying our staff appropriately and being responsible to the taxpayers with their money.
Dennis? It's back to you.
Okay, thank you. Just one point of clarification. Mike Jones mentioned about the above the median. And the only reason that I commented in that way was because I attributed that to a city council person's response. I didn't want to leave anybody out. So now that we know that Mr. LaFredo did not choose that as a response to that question, then all the responses were focused on the option B response. So that's the only reason. I was not trying to slip one in over the council. Okay. If there aren't any more comments about the survey and the responses that were given, I wanted to thank you for taking the time to do that. That was great. And then also to explain the draft philosophy that you have before you this evening. I have to admit, honestly, I stole this from the city of West Des Moines because I thought it was a very well structured and concise policy. But you'll see that here are the phrases that I meant to include deliberately so that it would reflect the survey results, but more importantly, the discussion that just occurred this evening, it confirmed everything that we inserted in this. And that is starting with employer of choice. That was a consensus among the council. Competitive with the labor market. Subject to the availability of funds. That was a very important point to include in the philosophy. Also pay for performance. The value in the survey result was an emphasis on long tenured performance. Then later on in the thing, at the very bottom, under compensation design, the words equitable, competitive, financial health, external market conditions and market salary analysis were all important phrases to include in this narrative. So with that being said, if there are any suggestions, I'd like to offer up an opportunity to have a dialogue about this draft document as well. If there are any suggestions for modifying it or removing something that's just something that does not cohere with what you explained in the discussion that we just had, please speak up and let me know about that. Otherwise, my intention is to finalize this and present to the council at your next meeting so that you can actually formally adopt this as your philosophy.
Dennis, can I just comment? I, I didn't see this until right before the meeting. I mean, we all have busy schedules, so that you sent out, I don't know when you sent it out, but anyway, I'm, so I don't have anything to object or even comment about it. I looked at it briefly before I got into onto the Zoom meeting. So I can't, I can't be of much help to you or hindrance to you on it at this point.
Thanks, Mike.
This, this does not have to be decided this evening. So if there is, if you have suggestions or comments about this after this evening's work session, feel free to bring those to me, email those to me, and I will include those for the discussion in two weeks.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Dennis, just a quick question. Can you tell me, because this can be mean different things for different organizations, but from your point of view in this document, pay for performance philosophy, tell me what that means to you.
Well, in going back in the file, and this is a common program that in communities I've worked in, but going back into the file, there was a three year period there where the city had a very structured performance evaluation process that assigned different points to performance. And that chart then determined what kind of increase in compensation would correspond to that performance. And so that's why what I'm speaking to here, I see, I envisioned the final product here being something that was extremely similar to what the city had in place three years ago. And it would be a combination of cost of living adjustments and pay for performance, actual performance evaluations corresponding to a, an increase in compensation.
Dennis, I think they had a performance evaluation, right, Public Works and Dalton did that prior to last year's agreement. And I think I may be wrong, but I think Chad did the same thing on his, the other employees that he had.
But there was Yes, we have a performance evaluation instrument all set. We're ready to go. We have those evaluations scheduled for later this month.
Yeah, I mean, so they didn't, they didn't all receive the same increase.
Teresa, did you have a comment after what you asked me?
Um, no, I'm glad that you found that information. That's good. And that I just wanted to make sure that I understood exactly what you were, because I've been part of different organizations where that means different things. So thank you.
Dennis, I think you brought it up, but you know, one of the paragraphs leads with internal equity is maintained through a job evaluation program. You're saying we have a job evaluation program?
Well, I went through one after arriving here shortly, and that was revising all of the job descriptions, fitting them to the task, the actual task that the employees were performing today. That's what I would consider a what do you, what did you call it?
Job evaluation program.
Job evaluation program. Sorry, that was a phrase I stole from West Des Moines.
And something we talk about every year is basically how our employees have grandfathered health insurance plans. Does anybody else have those in the Des Moines metro area?
The, the grandfathered health insurance programs are grandfathered for the city, not for the employees. The employees pay a flat 13% regardless of the plan. The city chooses to stay with the grandfather one because if we switched, then it's basically removing the cap on the cost and the city would be into a huge increase in expense for employee insurance. So to keep that cost in line and manageable year to year, we stay with that grandfather program. Eventually, I will predict that that program will go away and the city will be facing an increase in medical benefits that you have not experienced over the last few years.
Dennis, do we, do we take a look at other options though for, for medical benefits? And I know, I, I know about the grandfathered in part, we've heard that about two years ago. But we go out and check the market?
Mike, I can't speak to anything before September 8, 2020, when I started here. But soon after that, in October, we did do that. We did work with our broker and we surveyed the market to see what other options we had. We explored about four or five other options and still found that the one we recommended for the council to adopt in December was much less expensive.
So this is Teresa. So when I was on budget and finance committee, that was one of the things that we actually dove into pretty extensively. And I know it was the request of the employees at the time to stay on that because it's a very rich benefit. And my, my firm stayed on the grandfathered clause for a long time too. And I've been asking the question for several years in a row. The question is, is why aren't we looking at other plans? And I think that, and I would challenge us because I'm, and I'm not sure who the broker was and what they're doing. But I would guess that it's probably not the case that it is the most, or that it is the cheapest plan. And I appreciate also quality because I want our folks to have access to healthcare and good, good quality healthcare through, throughout plan. But I also would be very interested to know, you know, what the other cities are doing. We talk about in, in the last compensation study that we had, it talked about a percentage of the challenges is we don't really know what that, those planned benefits are. And that's the challenge that we have. I get to work on insurance issues all the time. Plus I'm a consumer for my business, so I understand how it works. And so this is an area that I want us to continue to dive into here before we move into an open enrollment and justifiably look at all of the options and compare the prices because I'm not confident that I believe the comments from the broker that it's just going to increase. Eventually, we're going to have to rip this Band-Aid off. And I will tell you that as a consumer myself, and I'm getting the insurance that I want, I pay less today, far less today than I did when I was under a grandfathered plan. So I share that from my experience.
I appreciate this. This is a, that was a good summary of the discussion we had back in December. And let me, let me rehash what we did talk about. We talked about looking at comps. We talked about shopping for a new broker. We talked about looking for different plans, not well marked plans. And then I think actually in my notes, Teresa, you said you were going to show us some information from your company and how, what the programs were like there. So you could give us at least a lead in to go that direction. So that's already on Rochelle's and Travis's radar screen, and we'll probably be gearing that up sometime late August, September. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and Teresa, I'm glad you did this because you reminded me, I've had a conversation with the mayor about transitioning back the budget committee, not just to be the budget committee, but to be the budget and personnel committee. And to take on all issues when it comes to finance and budget and also personnel issues like this. So I think that that we're going to try to reconstitute that because we think that that value is right there for the, a smaller group to talk about these things and be a little bit more transparent. So we want to do that in the near future too, preparing for next year's budget process. And also keep in mind, if you're talking about a compensation plan this evening, that will be one piece of that. And for us to look forward to pulling the Band-Aid off, that's just going to set us back even further when it tries, when we're trying to get a compensation plan in place. So you can't get away from that Band-Aid turning into more cost for the employee.
I under, there's balance that I appreciate. I get it.
Dennis, what's our next step?
If there aren't any comments more this evening or discussion about this draft document that I have, I would request that council send them to me by email. I will compile those and they'll be in front of the council, I think on the 17th for final adoption, whatever version you choose.
Dennis, did you get any feedback from staff on this? Is the, or are you planning to, just out of curiosity?
I had staff input on the draft comp philosophy.
Okay, thank you.
I'm walking a fine line though, you understand, because I do not want there to be a perception among the council that the staff is working on trying to get big increases in their compensation. And it's very difficult for me to also place that responsibility at their feet to in one step be impartial and the other step be looking at what their own personal situation is. So I'm trying to keep as much of this to my, close to the vest, if you understand what I mean, and in a discussion between myself and my bosses, you, the city council. So if you ask me that question in the future and I have to defer because I did it on my own, it was only because I wanted to keep my staff at arm's length on this.
Dennis, I would also ask you to dig in a little bit more. I, I made the comment earlier. I'm sticking with it because I think it's a, it's a variable that we need to consider, and that's the level of staffing. As we, as we increase benefits and increase compensation. I think that's just part of it. And so I think that should be looked at by you and, and looking at your overall staff from A through Z. And because it may, it may have to come to that to get what we want to achieve in terms of the philosophy is not to have quite, quite the number of employees that we have now. You know, the thing about
That's a preemptive jump to a conclusion that I don't think we're prepared to make at this point, but I will say that, I will say that in the next
Planning, Dennis.
The next meeting after that.
Dennis, it's called planning.
All right, I thought you were finished, Mr. LaFredo. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Called planning. It's not saying do it. It's saying planning because that's one of the variables as well. Because the city of Windsor Heights is there. I mean, it's 1.4 square miles. It's got less than 5,000 people in it. It's not going to get any bigger, I don't believe. And so that's a given part. And, and I don't disagree with the compensation studies or wherever we end up in terms of the compensation. But I think everything has to make sense in terms of dollars and cents to the taxpayers of the city. Because again, that's who we answer to. And so that's why I'm saying, take a look at staffing levels too. Because that's part of it.
Part of every salary discussion we had because you still have the basis for, how do you pay for it? What do we really need? If you remember, Mike, we went from a couple less to where we are right now. Performance from what I have seen is significantly improved.
What is, what is it now? Dave, I couldn't understand you.
Okay, remember when we were down a couple of people? And now we're back up to where performance is all, is much improved. So, but that's always a consideration.
Dave, I know there was one down in, in Public Works and the Public Works Committee, this was last year, supported Dalton's ask about filling that one position that wasn't filled. And we, we agreed to that as a committee. But I don't know of any others.
Okay, well, that's always a discussion. Dennis, back to you.
Of course it is.
In conclusion, I just wanted to let the council know that we're bumping up against In conclusion, I just wanted to let the council know that we're bumping up against time here. It it would not be fair to any of the employees of the city to get beyond July 1st without some kind of vision of where the council's headed on this. So I'm hoping to have something as a recommendation to the council either on the 17th or the first meeting in June that has kind of a summary, a wrap up of everything we've heard with regard to the compensation studies, this philosophy, and also we'll include what Mr. Lefredo's recommended and analyze our staffing situation today to see if there's any way that we could save money. However, I can probably with my gut tell you right now that we don't have enough people. We have people doing jobs that they do not need to be doing at this point, just because we're trying to deliver services to the community. A good example of that is the city administrator is currently your code enforcement officer, and that needs to change. So with that, I'm done with this evening. I have what I need. If you have any other comments, please feel free to send them to me by email.
Dennis, I just wanted to make another comment about from our, the previous conversation, really the part of my reason for asking about whether or not staff had input is a one, I'd love feedback. I think it's important to just get a sense. I do appreciate your your comments and I and I certainly respect that as a because I make decisions too, but about employee pieces. But I guess that my, where I was going with that was I'd love ideas and certain and and I'm sure you'd be open to them too. But I think about the paragraph in here that, you know, we strive to maintain a positive work environment through appreciation recognition programs, that whole, that whole area. All of these folks come from a different area. Was there a benefit that it doesn't cost a whole lot that came from another? And so I, I guess my point is, is I'd love to know if they, if there's something that they would that we could do to enrich their the offerings that we have there, that I would be open to those sorts of things. And I'd love to hear if they have suggestions on things that are important to to them. I ask my staff of it of it regularly and encourage and invite them if there's ways that I can make their their employment here better. But also through, you know, whether it's vacation time or paid time off or whatever the case may be. So I just use that as an example. If they have ideas, I I just wanted to say that I would love to hear them and I and I hope that we can find ways to make it better for them.
Part of that is called the cap A plan. Where they have options on where they want their money to go to or benefits. And and so I believe they should have some choices on their health benefits and other type of things like that dental benefits, vision, rather than one size fits all. Because if somebody doesn't
Teresa, to respond to what you said, I'll definitely make sure I include that information in my recommendation to the council.
Dennis, I know that I have asked a few questions and I can't remember if it's long term disability or short term disability. I get that confused. One, we already offer, the other one we don't offer, but it would be about $5,000 to offer that disability. And I'm sure you probably know which one we have, which one we don't have. But for $5,000, you know, that would be something that wouldn't be a whole lot of money, but it would be a lot, a whole lot of money from our budget. But it would be a whole lot to the staff, you know, that we're offering this plan to them if they like it. Because it's beneficial to them. Kind of like, I I don't know if, I can't remember what it's called, but I kind of like Aflac, you know, for $5,000 to have everybody, all city employees covered. You know, that's what I'm saying when I say think outside the box.
Yeah, I totally, Susan, I completely understand where you're coming from and what you're saying. Rochelle, I think it is, if Rochelle's there, I think what we currently offer is long term disability and we're looking at the short term disability option, or do I have those backwards, Rochelle?
Nope, you have it correct.
So can you say again which one we do have? We have long
We're looking at short term.
Yes.
Okay.
And Susan, my only comment to the out of the box stuff, because I, believe me, we're already working on that too. We're looking at those things and I've asked the count, the employees about that, but the short term disability doesn't pay for the car payment or the diapers for the kids at the grocery store. And that's what we're trying to balance here is those those non monetary items, more PTO, more disability coverage, or even I would say that modifying your health benefits to the good to the to the employee is money in their pocket that they don't have to have removed from their check every two weeks. That's a monetary item that helps pay for diapers. But some of these things are great and definitely we have looked at those and we'll have those in my recommendation in two weeks or four weeks, but those are the non monetary things to them as well. They're kind of like security items. Life insurance is another one, right? So we'll, we'll make sure we include all of those things in the recommendation. If they aren't in the recommendation, we'll definitely research and find out what we have to for you so you can be comfortable on those issues.
And just to say something else, people are purchasing the short term, so disability out of their pockets. So you know, $25, $50, whatever it is. So that is coming back to them. So it's not like, you know, my thoughts are just completely non monetary. You know, this is something that would come back into their pocketbook.
Any further discussions for Dennis to take with him and move forward? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
We'll call.
This is curious.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones. And Trace Maharns.
Yes.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.